Individual needs well outside the confines of their regular work hours. They are passionate, committed, flexible, intelligent, creative, loyal, thoughtful, and downright irreplaceable. When our youngest, a kindergartner, entered the school in the fall for the first time, Ms. Cottle used her skills as an improv actor and instructor to keep laughter and movement and self-awareness central for her young students, and facilitated a virtual community that he was excited and not the least bit timid to join in person as hybrid instruction began last month. And though we didn't meet at first in person, our second graders teacher, Mrs. Howe, made sure we knew we were supported as parents as we became reluctant and grossly underqualified student teachers under her supervision. She regularly kept us up to date and reassured us that she was our partner in this unusual time. I was brought to tears by the thoughtful notes and meaningful tokens she included for the parents at each school materials pickup. And when our second grader moved from Mrs. Howe's virtual classroom to Ms. Ribero's real-life classroom at the start of hybrid learning, she was welcomed into a new mini-community where she quickly found that she had met another trusted adult who just so happens to share her love of art and encourages it as a creative outlet and valuable learning tool. I recently read a quote saying, "Teachers don't work for the income. Teachers work for the outcome." While this is true, we must not let their generosity keep us from appropriately valuing their work. We have called our teachers essential workers over this last year. We've applauded them. We have sent cards and pictures and flowers and lunches and coffee and more. We have shared our thanks on social media and in signs in our windows and yards. We have told them they are vital and they are loved, and now we must compensate our teachers for the immense work they put in every day, pandemic or not. We must offer a living wage that will retain and attract a diverse faculty of qualified teachers. Please do everything you can to let Petaluma City Schools' teachers know that we value and appreciate the vital work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, and given Liz was the only one out there, I'm going to move us to close session. So see you guys in a minute. Okay, it looks like we're all here. We're gonna reconvene at 6:05. First item, adoption and approval of the agenda. Can they get a motion?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next up, special recognitions, reports, and presentations. We have Costa Grande, Petaluma High, San Antonio, and Valley Oaks. Charlie.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
My last board report to an eighth grade and now as a senior. Last one.
It's been great watching you grow up. I think that's when I first met you was eighth grade. So, alright, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Perfect. So hi, everyone. I'm Charlie Sibella. I'm the ASB president at CASA, or the co-presidents, and I'm gonna be presenting for CASA tonight. So first on here, we have some student work from our French for AP class. They were able to pick a poem in French, and then they were able to create a piece of art or however they wanted to show off the poem they decided to study, and once soon decided to do it through an art project.
It's gorgeous.
And then students return for hybrid learning. So you can see some students who are back on campus, and it's great to see life around campus. You can see smiling faces through people's masks and a friendly walk by. Just nice to see everyone back. And then the Casa Revista is still producing articles online. So the Casa Journalism Program is producing articles about coming back to school and the rest of this year, featuring different students throughout the year. And if you want to check out any of those stories, you can go to the costrevista.com. And here pictured is an adopt a senior article that Megan Gower and Daniel Lubliner wrote, both seniors, about how parents put together a page for the community members to adopt seniors as they finish out the year. And hybrid learning brings more hands-on experiences, especially for the sports medicine class. As you can see here, this is the introduction sports medicine class, practicing one of their techniques and one of their hands-on lessons during hybrid learning. And then the band is back. This is Mr. Millard's band class outside practicing, getting together for a nice photo, able to practice socially distant and all together again in person. And then where are the seniors off to? So myself and Megan Gower, both seniors, put together this page to try and find out where seniors are going for next year. So we've been posting on Instagram at CGHS Senior Plans. If you go on there, you'll see all different scenes of where they're going and where they're planning to go off to. This started last year when seniors weren't in person, and we decided to continue the tradition. And it's a great way to find out where everyone's going, especially those people you don't get to see that aren't doing hybrid learning, or you don't get to see every day. And it's just great to see a couple of people I've seen that are gonna go to my school. So that was cool. And on campus activities resume. So here UNC Mr. Wilson and a couple other students playing some chess after school, getting to hang out with teachers again, and just enjoy everything that school has to offer during and after. And then the Costa Grande High School cheer team, one big at Nationals. They competed in a varsity cheer team virtual competition like they normally do, and they got first place. Yeah. And athletics resume. Right here, you'll see the varsity girls soccer team after practice for a team photo. But many, many sports are back on the fields, doing their thing, get to be back in person and play their sports. I actually attended the girls varsity lacrosse game last night against Petaluma and CASA won, so woohoo. And then the Aska Gacho event. So on May 13th, this Thursday night, the Aska Gacho event, which we normally do at Kenna Worth, which eighth graders are able to ask current CASA students about CASA and their transition to high school and what it is like. We normally go to Kenna Worth during lunch. One afternoon, so students can ask questions, but we've transformed it to be online this year. We're gonna be joined by a CASA alum, Amy Jen, and it's gonna be on Instagram Live on her Ivy League guide page. And so eighth graders can still tune in and ask us questions. I'm one of the panelists along with two other students. And then senior awards are still happening, but drive-through style. And so here are two, two people from the counseling department posing by a brand-new backdrop, which is gonna be used as a photo booth at the event, which is gonna take place on May 20th. And looking forward, we have that senior awards night that I was just talking about, and then a senior prom event, which is gonna take place outside on May 30th from 7:00 to 10:00. Final exams are gonna be from June 2nd to 4th, and then graduation. And the last day of school is June 4th from 2:30 and 6:00 PM. So thank you.
Thank you, and we will see you at graduation.
Yes, looking forward to it.
Congratulations, Charlie.
Thank you.
Alright. I'll let you bring up the next panelist, Ashley.
I'm actually not seeing the Petaluma High one. I'll go to San Antonio and check back for Julia.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I don't see Oliver yet.
Looks like he's been promoted.
Okay, Oliver.
How's everybody doing?
Good, thank you.
Good, good.
I'm gonna introduce our two amazing students and then let them take over. First of all, you've already met Oliver here. Oliver is a recent graduate. He's been a San Antonio student for a number of years, and we are going to very much miss him when we come back in person next year. He's been an amazing student. And Samantha Mathias is a 10th grader who we've known since eighth grade when we had RISE on the campus and Crossroads before that. So Samantha is very well-versed with the San Antonio campus and the teachers, and she's grown immensely since she's been with us. So with that, I will hand it over to you guys. Thank you. That's not a... Oh, there you go. Okay.
Alright. So should I begin the presentation right now? The good? Alright, perfect. So this is San Antonio High School, and I'm, my name's Oliver. I'm a student here that's, that's recently graduated, and I'm here to explain the, what's so good about the school. And why San Antonio? Well, San Antonio has, has helped many students, including myself, to make sure we're on the right path and to success and all that. We have a family-like community that's always helping us out, whether, whether we're like having struggles or something like that. And our small classes, we have more support. Our staff here are like more than help. Sorry, they're more than happy to help us if we're in need of help. We give students a place to feel successful and supported, and we're expecting 35 graduates this year, which is amazing. And here are amazing staff. The teachers at San Antonio have worked together for many years and have created a caring, nourishing, and supportive environment for students. Our focus is on helping each student be their best, develop a post-graduation plan, and pathway to a successful future. We hold weekly kid check meetings to discuss all of our students' brainstorm strategies and support each other in our work. We use Parents' Square to share important information, update students and families on events and activities, and reach out to families with concerns. And here are like our students. 61% Latino, 31% are white and not Hispanic origin, 2% are African-American, 2% Asian, 2% American Indian or Native Alaskan Indian, 2% designated to or more races, 64% male, 36% female, 19% special education, 85% socio or economically disadvantaged, and 5% English learners. And our student work. Here's some from a book we recently read called Yaki de Ogaro, and these are some comments from our, one of our students, or some of our students. And here's some more. Here's mine. I really enjoyed the book. It felt kind of relatable hearing the story from Pity's perspective. She's just a normal teenager trying to get around life, but there's a lot of conflict in her life, mostly caused from school. She also has to hide things from Ma, so she doesn't end up worrying about her. The things, the book cover are really important, not only in today's world, but it's been a problem for decades. Bullying is nothing new, and there will never be an end to it. But this book really seems to describe the life of a troubled teenager pretty accurately. I would definitely read this book in the future if I ever get the chance to. And here's some more work from English. And then from Chicano Studies, here's some more. And then here's some from Spanish. There's a bunch of like art and stuff like that. And then onto the next one is where we're, have some more art. And then for academic counseling, we have the Jump Start SRJC Program. 14 students participated in the Jump Start Program. Four students completed counseling. 272 students enrolled in SRJC courses outside of school. And even the North Bay Construction Corporation Weekly Countywide Program for students who are interested in joining the trades. Five students enrolled in the program, which began in January. Opportunities for students to join in three information trade career webinars in March and April. And here's an event that we, that the school hosted to pick up our T-shirts, which was pretty cool. And here's our academic counseling. 19 graduates to date anticipate three May graduates and 13 in June. And our school counselor to student and/or parent contacts are 341st spring semester. College and career opportunities. Outside work experience. 30 work permits have been issued. 22 students have completed outside work experience, and 181.95 elective credits have been earned through outside work experience. And our school activities, awards, and graduate recognitions. Our most recent ceremony was on May 5th, which included three graduates, 22 honor roll recipients, 32 students with perfect attendance, visit from Jared Huffman, a presentation from a special agent from the FBI, and an all-school screening of Once and the Future Peace compliments of the Mill Valley Film Festival. And some school activities, some classroom visits we had are from Miguel Alfaro, which is an agent state from insurance. Jeff Myers, a senior recruiter and Apple AR/VR division. Tony Robinson, a settlement advisor, Ringler Associates. Eric Spencer, CEO of EcoLube Recycling. And Joe McGary, which is a candidate for Fairfax Town Council, spoke about the importance of voting. And here are some pictures of our students on the campus.
So Sammy, do you wanna speak up a little bit?
About the slideshow?
About your experience. Yep. Let us see your beautiful face.
Um, well, okay. Well, I'm in the car, because we were getting food, but I'm sorry. Um, so my experience in San Antonio, probably I went there because I had a lot of hard time with my homework. And before I went to San Antonio, I actually didn't know that I had an IEP in math, which was shocking to me. So now I actually get the help that I need in my math class per se, or any of my classes really, and they have a study skills program. And it has helped me a lot, San Antonio, and all the teachers there are just super understanding about, you know, like if there's assignments that are late and you need extra time, your teachers will give you that extra time, and it's helpful for a lot of students in San Antonio, including myself. And honestly, after COVID and everything, and we started going back to school, I was really excited. I was very excited to go back and see all of my teachers' faces and be able to actually get more help than I was getting through, through distance learning. And, um, it's, I just, I'm glad that everything's starting to go back together with school, because now a lot of the students I know can get the help that they need. And especially San Antonio, it's so different from other schools. It's like you walk in there and you know everybody. It's a small setting, and I feel very comfortable there, knowing I have small-setting classes. And you just, you get a lot of one-on-one with your teachers, and it's been a lot of help. So I love that school, and I'm glad that I have two years left.
So you guys will all see Oliver when we hold our graduation ceremony. For those of you that are attending on June 3rd, he'll be walking across the stage, a proud recipient of a San Antonio diploma. And I thank you both, you guys. Does the board have any questions for them?
I just wanna say thank you for the presentation. It was so thorough. Felt like we got an inside into your school. Sammy, thank you for, sorry, did you go by Sammy or Samantha?
Either or.
Okay, I'll just call you Sammy. I just appreciate hearing your journey to San Antonio, and that you feel like you found a good place for yourself there. And Oliver, we'll see you at graduation.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments for these guys? No?
Just thank you. Just thank you. You did a great job. I really appreciate that you did that. You did great. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Do we have the Petaluma High representative here?
I believe so.
Okay.
Maybe something happened when I promoted her. I'm not seeing her anymore. Maybe she got kicked out. There we go.
Alright, Julia, whenever you're ready, go ahead.
Okay. Awesome. Alright, so to catch up with Petaluma High, the sports have been going well. I think everyone's excited to be back playing their sport and having some collaborative time with their team and seeing people they may not have seen, or maybe some other people who didn't go back to school but decided to play. A notable thing about our sports so far, that Petaluma did win the Egg Bowl against CASA. So that was an exciting game, and definitely a good win for PHS. Hybrid learning has been going well. It began April 19th for Petaluma High, and has been going smoothly. Everything's been going good with social distancing and wearing masks, and teachers have definitely continued to do a good job balancing students in the room and at home. So that's been comforting and helped a lot for students who may have stayed home. And then students are required to do wellness checks before they come to reassure that they are healthy and ready to come to school. And PHS Senior Prom gets to happen this year, which was really exciting. ASB has had a lot of help from parents and people in the community who have helped donate to reach our goals so that we could get catering and other things to make it a little more special. The event will require a COVID test and/or a proof of vaccination for entering. So that will help, and the only people that will be there will be Petaluma High seniors and chaperones. So yeah, and then with our rev trap donations that we've got, we've been able to get catering from Sonoma Preferred, have a DJ. We'll get to do our prom court, possibly have some variation of a raffle to kind of mimic our project grad that we usually do for seniors. So yeah, it should be an exciting time. And then we are doing a senior breakfast, which will be from, we got donuts from Kenny's Donuts, so we can also kind of help out a small business in the community there. Same with milk and yogurt from Clover and fruit from Petaluma Market. So this will be an adjusted senior breakfast that will be a drive-through. And then AP testing and state testing have begun for some. So that's just been going on, kind of a stressful time for students, but has gone smoothly from what I've heard. And yeah, I think that's pretty much it.
Alright, thank you. Exciting to hear about you guys back in school and end-of-year activities. Alright, thank you. Alright, so next up, we have information on apprenticeship opportunities by IBW, our union.
I think we have one hour.
Oh, we do?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought those were combined.
I will just promote the students now.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, guys. I almost left you out. Alright, go ahead whenever you're ready.
Alright, we have two amazing students representing Valley Oaks. Evelyn Zax is a sophomore, and Nicholas Brahas is a junior. They're both really amazing and can speak to Valley Oaks. They've had a number of, well, Nicholas has been with us since eighth grade, so he can really speak to the whole experience of Valley Oaks. Evelyn has been with us with distance learning, so she's got a little bit of a different flavor, but we're very proud of both of them and proud to have them represent us tonight. So with that, I will hand it over to you guys.
Alright, I'm Evelyn Zax. I'm in 10th grade. I'm about to finish my first year at Valley Oaks. And then, Valley Oaks was established 30 years ago and has been an alternative for those who can't quite attend normal school, athletes, models, actors. And at one time, Valley Oaks had an annual enrollment of over 100 students.
I'm Nicholas Brahas. I'm in 11th grade, and so with the one teacher, one student thing, it's really helpful for me, because it's like really easy to get help from your teacher rather than being in a classroom. And it's more focused on just you. That is helpful, because like I don't like big environments, like a whole classroom. So being with just a teacher is one of the things that I, makes me stay at Valley Oaks, and the teachers are all so nice, so.
Adding on to Nicholas, I really like the one teacher, one student thing, because I feel like there's more options when it comes to what you learn. And if you're really interested in a certain part of a subject, you can go and dig deeper and really immerse yourself in the topic, whereas you don't really have the time to sidetrack and learn about it quite like that in the normal classroom setting.
The staff there is all very supportive, and it, like, just adding also one more thing to that, the one-on-one. The teachers are, they help you a lot with everything from like, if you're struggling, they'll be really understanding and help you in the ways that you need help, such as like, if you're not getting enough hours, they'll try to understand why, and they'll help you in those certain parts. Like, they won't make you feel bad for not understanding anything. They're all really welcoming, from the teachers to the people at the front desk and the principal and vice-principal. Everyone's just super nice and friendly and welcoming.
Our student snapshot, in the 2020-2021 student demographic for our school, we have a total number of students served to date of 59, and our total current student count is 45.
So Ashley, if you flip through, this is just representations of some of the student work, and they'll let you know when they want you to stop.
Can you stop on this one? Um, so this is different artwork, but the one in the middle actually is one of the ones I drew. It's Venice, and it's a one-point perspective. The, this was one of my more, my favorite pieces I did because of just the way it turned out. And, um, it's just the way that the, like with one-on-one, the teacher really helps you with the detail and just making it be the best that you can get it. Like, if you're in a whole classroom, then it would be harder to get all like specifically how you want it, but the teacher, it's like they explain to you everything you need to do to make it how you want to look.
Right here. Um, this year I took biology for my science, and I really gained a new love for the subject that I didn't have before, specifically because of the one-on-one. specifically because of the one-on-one setting and how I was able to dig deeper and learn more about specific parts of science that I really liked. And I didn't really have that opportunity before because it just kind of all went by really fast. And I liked that I was able to focus on a really specific part that I really enjoyed. Right here. Um, I love Gothic literature with a passion. And for English, I was actually able to read Dracula and write an essay on it. And it was a lot of fun for me. And it was the first time that I had actually like really immersed myself in a novel for English and I got to like pick what I liked about it and really talk about it at length. And when you're talking about something you really enjoy, you take more effort to learn more about it. And you really immersed yourself in that subject and it's really like great for furthering your love of learning.
Just make sure you all notice that that drawing says Evelyn Zax on the bottom. So that's the artist as well.
Like this one. Can you go back one? So there's different like electives that you can take and such as, like I picked power reading and community service also one. Community service, you can, you take five hours for your, for your, like the five hours you have to do. And then anything after that is elective. And I think that's a really important elective for the reasons that it helps your community and also that it helps you for not just school, but like for other things such as work. You can put it on as like community service looks good on your resume. And it just is, can be a nice thing to do. Like I volunteered at the elementary school I used to go to. And I can't do that anymore because of COVID. But when I did, it was like a nice thing to go and help the community and something fun to do that maybe would steer me in direction for my career later.
Every month, Valley Oaks recognizes one student who like deserves special recognition in bright news. And this student is awarded like student of the month.
Okay, um, this one, I, well, I'm not, I'm not yet close to graduating yet, but I did see a graduating ceremony taken in progress. It's cool because you don't have to graduate on time with, or like at the same time as a normal school. Like you could get all your classes done a little bit quicker. And just if you wanted to have them done at a, like a faster pace, you could do that. And all the teachers and counselors and principal, they'll help you with that goal. If you talk to them and say like, I want to graduate a little bit early and like, what can I do if I want to go straight to four-year college or anything like that. And so they'll help you. And I'm, with the help of all them, I figured a way for me to graduate six months early. And that is like amazing to me because I didn't think I would be able to do that. But the ceremony is, it's like not like you graduate and then they give you diploma and you're done. They have like a little bell ringing ceremony and they give you the cap and gown. So it's like a nice little send off for after you graduate. And you take a picture with the staff and it's just a nice way for them to show you like your hard work paid off.
Um, well, I really love being at Valley Oaks. I think it's a great alternative for me and thank you so much for listening to our presentation.
Thank you.
And I just want to say on behalf of the students, putting together their presentation, all of it via Zoom was a challenge and I, I'm so proud of you guys doing this. So thank you for both San Antonio and Valley Oaks. I'm really, really proud of you all.
Yeah, thank you. I don't think we've ever had such an in-depth presentation from our Valley Oak students. And the artwork is amazing. I'm always blown away by all the school student art. Thank you, Becky.
You are welcome.
Thank you Nicholas and Evelyn. Alright, so now we will hear from Sonoma County IBW Local 551, one of our local unions on apprenticeship.
Hi, everybody. Sorry about that. Good evening, Board Chair Pon, Board Clerk Jen, and Board Trustees Cloud, Quinn, and Webster. Love that. We were very excited to talk to you this evening about apprenticeship opportunities in the Electrical Union IBW Local 551 and the Plumbers and Pipefitters Union UA Local 38 within the building trades. I apologize. My name is John McIntigard. I'm the Business Manager with IBW Local 551 and really excited to be talking with you guys here tonight. So I, Ashley, if you're ready, could you please run the video?
My Monday starts just like anybody else, except I wake up at three o'clock in the morning.
The job starts at 6:30, about an hour drive. So I was up at 4:30.
It's, it's not glorious by any means. It's, but I love doing it. It's, you know, it's something different every day.
Overall, it's actually, it's cool working. You gotta learn. Everything's learning on the job. So that's why you go to school twice a week at night for six hours and you work 40 hours a week.
A career as an electrical worker with the National Electrical Contractors Association, NICA, and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, or IBW, offers extraordinary benefits, including a strong wage package, medical insurance, and a sound retirement program, among many other benefits. This exciting career starts with apprenticeship through a Joint Apprenticeship and Training Committee, or JATC Training Center, operated by an IBW Local Union and Local Chapter of NICA.
They give you all the tools that you need to succeed in the, on a job site out here. Because you only really have five years in the apprenticeship, you know, so you got to get the most out of it while you're being trained.
An IBW NICA apprenticeship offers apprentices the invaluable opportunity to work on the job, side by side with the journeyman electrical worker and education in world-class electrical training facilities unparalleled anywhere in the industry. A career as an IBW NICA electrical worker opens the door to the possibility of exceptional career advancement. From apprentice to journeyman, estimator, and management roles, to even becoming the owner of your own electrical contracting business.
After I complete my five years in the apprenticeship program, I hope to pursue a license as a master electrician.
I just hope somebody gives me the opportunity to run a job like this or get to the point where I've built my career enough to where, hey, that, that big job over there, yeah, that's Jordan Basics' job. That's what he's doing.
But while the prospect of becoming an IBW NICA electrical apprentice may seem like the right path, working in construction is not for everyone. The real-life rigors of the electrical construction trade and the commitment to an additional five years of classroom instruction in the local area JATC Trade School, as well as 8,000 hours of on-the-job training, should be understood and accepted prior to applying for your apprenticeship. This will help ensure you are making the right choice.
If you ain't learning on the job and you're just trying to show up to get paid, you know, it's, you ain't gonna really learn too much. In class, they'll do hands-on activities to kind of give you a feel for it. But then on the job, the journeyman will slow down and talk to you and kind of, if you ever have a question, usually just ask them and they're, they should be able to stop whatever they're doing and talk to you.
Further, apprentice candidates are expected to possess a mechanical aptitude and a fundamental understanding of algebra and geometry, while being on time and keeping a good attitude. Utilizing what has been learned in the classroom, online, and in hands-on training applications, in conjunction with your willingness to listen to and carry out direction as instructed, is imperative. This is not only to ensure the job is done properly, but also for the safety of everyone working on the job site. Your attendance is also required on all work and school days, as well as being prompt, as the combination of quality work, safety, and on-time delivery of every construction project is part of what makes the IBW the very best in the industry. Workdays in construction are different than in most other occupations. The construction workday may start as early as 6:00 AM and may also extend several hours past a standard eight-hour day.
I'm up at 5:45. My alarm's off 4:30.
Day starts at 5:00. So I try to be at work and park by 4:30.
No, you gotta be in class at 7:00, ready to go. You're late, go home.
Although IBW NICA apprentices and journeymen are paid well for each and every hour worked, you may be required to make special accommodations for extended workdays or work a six-to-seven day week in order to complete a job with a tight deadline. Apprentices are also expected to attend school during the week, either in the evening or during the day, in addition to taking online classes through their local JATC. This places an additional burden on the situation to ensure all schoolwork is completed and done properly. Right from the very first day on the job, apprentices are expected to be dressed appropriately for work. This not only includes being dressed for the weather and potential changes, but also to work safely on a construction site. Weather conditions are often extreme, as electrical workers may be outside in the coldest months, as well as the warmest, with temperatures ranging from well below freezing to well above 90 degrees with high relative humidity. This is not only a matter of your comfort to work well on the job, but also your safety.
The other day I was in a manhole that we have out there. I mean, I was in there for about five hours yesterday. My feet were warm.
The work of an electrical worker may even be surprising to some, as apprentices may be required to unload trucks, dig ditches, and build basic structures in addition to many other tasks.
I had no idea of what I was getting into, the extent of what I was getting into when I got into it. I did not know that electricians build things. I did not know that they tear down things. I figured they would just wire stuff.
We've got a delivery coming. The guy's gonna pull it over by the pipe. He's got one skid. Let him get that for me.
You should also be aware that the restroom facilities on most job sites are limited to portable units and will be the only option available.
I never even thought about the restroom situation. Never paid any attention until I had to go to the restroom.
The understanding of your apprenticeship experience, both on the job and at the training center, is the key to making this career choice a success. And we hope this has provided a quality look into the life of an apprentice.
As long as you're there and you want to work, it always goes by smoothly.
It's just a day in the life of, is what I do.
Because, you know, you're outside for eight hours. It's a tax of the day. You're out working physically. I wouldn't say it's, it's easy by any means.
It's not, it's not bad. I was, I know people think of construction, they think of dirty and they think of, you know, oh, it's a man's job, but you know what? It could be a woman's job too.
It's all about working together, being organized, and doing it right.
More information is available here on Electric Prep and through your local JATC Training Center.
Awesome. Well, this is leading in right away. So I'm going to introduce you to a couple of folks here in the IBW. And I'll start with Leah Edwards. Leah is a shining example of if there's a job to be done, then anyone can do that job. Leah is one of several apprentices that right now are excelling in the electrical trade. Leah is also a proud mom, ma'am, and will soon be able to call herself a journeyman electrician after graduation from a state-approved apprenticeship program. Leah?
Hi, everyone. As John introduced me, my name is Leah Edwards. I'm a fourth-year apprentice with Local 551 IBW. I'm also Petaluma resident. I've lived here since 1989 and I love this community. So before Christians Union, I was working three jobs in order to provide for myself and my two children. As a single mother, it's been a challenge. So you know, now that I have a union job, you know, as a woman in the trades, I'm able to make dollar for dollar what every man next to me makes, which as you know, is not something you can say for most careers. So just a little backstory, I graduated Petaluma High in 2001. I had no idea what I was going to do with my future and I tried many different industries. I, after pursuing many different jobs, I learned about the IBW. And the IBW has given me the opportunity to provide a good life for my family and show my daughters the benefits of having a good union job. With this career, I have great wages. I have great benefits. I have a pension and I have a true future. Next year, I'm going to be buying a house in Petaluma, which is, would not be possible on a single income without my union career. The apprenticeship program is an excellent way to learn the trade with the support of great teachers and journeymen. Without the apprenticeship and the support of the brotherhood, my dream of raising my, my children in the Petaluma community would be out of reach. And now I'm thankful to say that my children will also be Petaluma High alumni. And I get to be part of building projects like Loma Vista Elementary, which is a project I'm currently working on. I just want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to what I have to say and also to just take a moment to acknowledge all that we've been through during this pandemic and thank everyone on the board and in Petaluma City Schools for everything you've done for our children to help them get through this. Thank you.
Here, 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 here. Next, we have Stephanie Hall. Stephanie is one of our journeyman electricians. Stephanie graduated a couple of years ago from our state-approved apprenticeship program. As the top apprentice for all five years, we thought Stephanie was done with these accolades, but nooo. Stephanie decided that more women should have what we have and decided to start the first local 551 Women's Committee with an idea to get out into the community and do more, give back as much as possible. IBW Local 551 Wins Committee has done several great community events, including helping fund and bring electricity to a building at the Women's Shelter in Santa Rosa. Stephanie?
Hi, everyone. My name is Stephanie Hall. I'm a union journeyman electrician out of Santa Rosa. I joined the union in 2014, right off of the, coming from a, just a desk job. I didn't have any sort of experience. You know, I went to my first job carrying a bag of tools that I had no clue what they were called. They took me right in under their wings and everyone treated me just like the guy next to me that was also brand new. Taught me all the names of my tools, how to properly use a tape measure. And I ended up just, you know, rising up just by showing to work on time and just listening to what they had to teach me. By my second year in the apprenticeship, I was able to buy a house and move out of my mom's house. And by my fifth year, my fifth and final year, I was actually pregnant. I was able to work all the way until my eighth month, hanging lights, doing everything that I was doing prior to being pregnant and took a couple of months off because I was able to save, save some money. And when I came back to work, I was, you know, at the top again, I was able to do my own, own jobs. I didn't have to be followed around by a journeyman anymore. And, you know, just, just going to work as a union electrician has just benefited me so much. Being able to drive by jobs that I've done and show my children, you know, those lights over there are on because I worked there because I did that. So I've never had any hardships being the only woman on the job. You know, 90% of the time it's, I'm the only female there, but I've never felt that way. All the guys are just always super helpful and making me feel welcome. So, thank you.
There are no limits to what both Leah and Stephanie can do and we can't wait to see what they do next. Regarding the IBW apprenticeship, it's a five-year program. There is no college debt. There's no debt when you're done. You don't have to like, oh, hey, now I've got $100,000. No, there's no debt. It's a career, not a job. You have the ability to have a sustainable life here in Sonoma County. You might be wondering, how do I apply? How do I get, how do I be part of this? We have a website. It's actually rejatc.org, rejatc.org. So we have approximately 120 students who are also Santa Rosa Junior College students because we're affiliated with the Santa Rosa Junior College. What you need to apply, you need a high school diploma or GED. You must have completed algebra, high school algebra with a C or better in two semesters. And you must have a driver's license. We want to make sure you get to work. And if anybody's got any questions after this, you can ask me or contact me afterwards. So it's a, it's a, again, we're very, very proud of our program. We are one of two. We are one of two major apprenticeships here in Sonoma County, and the other apprenticeship is the Plumbers and Pipefitters. That would be UA Local 38. So, that would be Frank Reardon, and I believe Frank is on the line with us also.
I am. Hi, everyone. I am Frank Reardon, and I am, I am a business agent with UA Local 38, the Plumbers and Pipefitters, HVAC Local here in Santa Rosa. We're located on a piece of property about five acres that we own on Santa Rosa Avenue, where we, we're very similar to what John said, the video, the comments from his outstanding members. It's, it's carbon copy to, to, to our trade. We both have five-year apprenticeships, and we'd love to tap, tap into in a much more significant way to the, the students that are coming out of, out of the high schools. We've, we've been very active around Santa Rosa. Just prior to the, to the virus, we plan on becoming much more active in the Petaluma area as soon as everybody comes out from undercover. And we like to really engage in, in especially the, the shop classes. I've had a whole, quite a few students that have come out of the, the Petaluma school system, and the uniqueness of the county, the fact that we have a large industry of farming and ranching, really lends itself to the mechanical trades. We, I am part of one of the, or the fastest growth industry within construction, and that's HVAC. Heating, ventilating, air conditioning, and cooling. And there's no end in sight to it. It's being promoted by the, the advancements or the, or the need to create a green environment, as well as the, the high-tech industry. Those two things seem to change that trade every week. A lot's required of you, but a lot's provided to you as well. We, we do, the apprentices that we bring in do need to be 18 years or older. They do need to be graduated from a high school or the equivalent. We, we have an extensive, very in-depth five-year apprenticeship, and it's, it's, it's a great place to be, and I highly recommend it. And again, we will be making our rounds through Petaluma to any, to any grade school or high school that would like to hear us talk. I travel with John McIntagger. I'd probably deal with John McIntagger in front of you here, that I called John Mac, because his name's easier to pronounce that way. I deal with John probably every day, and my other two counterparts in, within the industry are the springer fitters and sheet metal. And collectively, we, we like to travel through the schools and speak to the students, any student that wants to come and speak to us. And also, I would welcome and encourage anybody that wants to call me, and I know John feels the same way, if he wanted to call us directly, come on by. I'll give you a personal tour of the school and show you what we have to offer. Our school is not back in person yet. We will be back hybrid beginning in the fall semester. Our schools, both John's and mine, do follow the, the standard school year, and both John's and my schools are affiliated with the Santa Rosa JC. So, when our apprentices are done with their five-year apprenticeship, which is twice a, twice a night, I'm sorry, twice a week in the evening from, from, in my case, from 5 o'clock in the afternoon until 8, while they work full-time during the day, when they're done with their apprenticeship, they're about, about 75% done with their AA degree. They could pick up a course or two at Santa Rosa JC and actually have an AA degree. So, all that while you're making very good money and benefits. So, I don't want to repeat anything that John said. John was very comprehensive. So, I look forward to meeting you all in person and, and showing up to the schools and, and talking to the kids about what potential is there that is not directly through the standard college system. Thanks for your time, everyone.
That concludes our presentation this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and hi, Stephanie's baby.
They're so cute. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah, so, are you in touch with our career counseling services at our secondary school?
John, I am not. I don't know if you are.
Yeah, we're not directly, so we would like to be.
Yeah, I would encourage you to, I mean, we just heard from our lead counselors over the weekend, and I know career counseling is part of what they do, so that would be a really nice connection for you to make. And, you know, I was curious, since Leah and Stephanie, it sounds like each of them came to your apprenticeships with a gap between high school, you know, some small gaps, some larger gaps, but eventually making their way back. What portion of your students come directly from high school versus coming back to it after, after trying something else?
It's a great question. I, I sit on the interview committee too. And so we have a lot of kids that come in, but are not quite sure this is what they want to do just yet. But they're, they're there because somebody told them to get there. There are some that actually, you know, they're stars right off the bat. You know that this is what they want to do. They're totally mechanically minded. They're gonna be in the trade somewhere, and if they're here right now, let's snatch them up, you know, before they are picked up by another trade. And then there's other folks that are just knocking on doors. We encourage everybody to, to make sure you know that this is what you want to do, because as both Frank and I say, as well as the other trades, this is a career. It's not a job. It's, it's, it's a career. For the next, if you get in at 18, and we tell everybody this, if you get in 18, you've got 44 years of doing this before you retire. So, are you sure it's now, you know, and if you are, then great, pursue it. If not, then have fun, do something for a few years, enjoy yourselves, because you just got out of school. And we also understand too that to expect an 18, 17, or 18-year-old to know what they want to do for the rest of their life, that's a big ask. And so we, we try and just, you know, shepherd them through this process and educate them on, okay, you're here now, this is an interview. If you don't make it, then please reapply, because in the Electricians Union, we have over 300 applicants every year, and we might take in 5% of those applicants. You know, which is, we'd like to make that more, but, but that's just reality. And we let them know this. So, we have a lot of students that have gone through our program that did come out of high school, and we have the other side of it too, where they're 30 years old, then they come back. Currently, one of the business agents working for me, he got in when he was 19 years old, you know, and he was a journeyman before he was 30 years old, which is phenomenal. So, I'm sure the plumbers have something similar too.
Yeah, it's, my story's similar, John. I, I would say it with my trade, I don't get a lot of 18, 19, 20-years-old, year-olds. I might get the 21-year-old on. And I think people, a lot of the kids want to experience a little life experience, and they want, they, in some cases, they want to follow the, the path most traveled, and they may find out about the trades one or two or three or four years after they get out of high school. And that's kind of when they introduce themselves to me, and we get them in, and it's not a bad thing. A little bit of maturity is good. A little bit of life lived is good. A little bit of seeing what life's on the other side is good. Especially, John and I are both union reps, so that's our, that's what we do. So, when the kid, when the kids, the students, when they, when they come into the, the local, it's refreshing to be treated with dignity and not have your paycheck fluctuate because your boss wants to fluctuate it. So, there, once they get a couple of years under, under, under their skin after high school, they're more than, more, they're more likely to really appreciate what the, what being a union mechanic can bring.
One more thing I want to add to that, if I may, trustee Jen, is that we, again, understand that we might be talking, we've talked to middle schools, you know, we have, we go to middle schools, we go to high schools. We, we go anywhere we're asked to go, and sometimes even more when we're not asked, we're there. And all we want to do, all we want to do is just show that there's an option on the table, because too many kids are geared for college, or at least pushed towards college. Not everybody's going to college. And we understand too that if they're not going to college, then there's a chance that they might feel that they're failing. They might feel themselves that they're failing, because they're not gonna make college. So, we want to educate them that, no, 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 it's okay not to go to college. It's okay to not to know what you want to do right now. But if you do choose something else besides college, then think of the trades. You know, we're not an option B, we're not a plan B, or we're plan A, we're option A, we believe. You know, maybe just not right now, and we want to support them in their journey to whatever it is they want to figure out what they want to do. And we understand that that might not be at 18. So, when we talk, we bring that up and we, we let them know. So, if some do come in at 18 or 19, they are gung ho. They're gonna make it in, no matter what we do. And then there's some others that are gonna figure it out when they're 25, and they just started a family, or 30, and they just started a family, like, uh-oh, I need to get serious now. And we see them too.
Yeah, and you know, we speak for all crafts. I am not out there hustling anybody to get into my local union, ever. When we speak to the students, we speak as counselors. We speak as people that, that, that are, we just have the best interest of the, of the students in mind. And so we speak, there's 18 crafts that make up the building trades. It takes 18 people, 18 trades to build the building that, wherever you're at right now. So, John McIntagger and myself speak on behalf of all the trades when we speak to the students, and, and just let them know what's available for them. We're, I am, I'm never out there looking to convince somebody that they need to get into my, into my local necessarily. Just, just open the door to visiting and looking at an apprenticeship, and I think you might like what you see, kind of a thing.
I couldn't even convince my two boys, my two older boys, to be electricians, you know. They, they both went through Petaluma Schools, and they're both doing great. This isn't what they wanted to do. That's good.
All right, well, thank you. I mean, we hear so much about, you know, our local colleges, the JC and Sonoma State. It's nice to hear about these local career pathways as well. So, appreciate you guys for coming and sharing, and we encourage our high schoolers and our college and career centers to reach out to you guys, so.
We'll also be, we'll also be sharing this, this recording with, with our career counselors, and, and they'll be able to archive that and share that for students going through.
Great. Good news.
That's awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, you guys.
That was really.
So, moving on to item 6.3, Circle Up.
Hello, yes, I will introduce our team here. Today, we have Leah Robinson, Tiffany Hong, Sandra Larson, Katie Rennie, Angela Mason, Amanda Kirk, and Elena Mendoza are gonna be speaking today on all the work we've done with Circle Up. I'm gonna introduce it real, well, really quickly and then pass it over to Tiffany. So, as you all know, in August of 2019, we did that board study session where the community came out loud and clear saying we need more around all things diversity, equity, and inclusivity. And so, we worked as a team that year with community members, board members, parents, students, teachers, classified staff, to select and vet various organizations to see who fit best with Petaluma City Schools and, and the work that we wanted to do around diversity and equity, the work we wanted to do around restorative justice. And from that vetting process, Circle Up bubbled to the top, and we selected them and began working with them. We recruited students, board members, staff to come learn to be Circle Up practitioners. And so, in 2020 started, and obviously, then we all scattered to the wind, and we were doing everything on Zoom. So, everything that we had planned, we went back and we replanned it. And, and Circle Up just met us where we were, again, as a district, just knowing our community, and, and started running these practitioner sessions via Zoom. And our teachers and staff and students and board members just, just worked it. I mean, have just been really into the sessions, very participatory, going out to staff meetings and leading groups of circles to start this relationship building so that we can have these more complicated diversity discussions. And then things changed again, and we started bringing students back to school, and everyone's schedule shifted again. So, once again, we had to go back and rearrange and, and increase the number of meetings we were doing and do them at different times. But again, everyone who's presenting today and all of our practitioners were just amazing and flexible and adaptable alongside Circle Up. And so, they are coming here today to talk to you about the work, an overview of the work that's been done. And then Circle Up is gonna present a little bit about the work that's to come with Petaluma City Schools, because obviously, this is gonna be an ongoing thing. So, with that, I'm gonna pass it off to Tiffany, and Tiffany, I believe you can screen share for your presentation.
Thank you so much, Liz. Hello, board, it's Google Home. Nice to see you all. I like just got my camera. I thought it was like plugged in, and then we came on, and I was like, it's not working. And we'll just flip it on as well. Um, well, good evening, board. It's nice to see all of you and staff as well. I'm joined here by my colleague Leah Robinson, as well as some of our really, really awesome restorative practitioners, which I will allow them to introduce themselves in just a little bit. But before we get there, I wanted to share with you all today the progress that we've made in this year during these really uncertain times, and how much we have still been able to accomplish, given the flexibility of everybody that's been involved. So, going into screen share now. All right, am I sharing the right thing? All right, so, like Liz had mentioned, my name is Tiffany. I am from Circle of Education, the co-founder, and also Chief Experience Officer, and have, I've had a really, really great pleasure of working alongside many of you in the Zoom room and outside of this room in order to start Petaluma City Schools' work around diversity, equity, inclusion, and beyond. And so, to start our year in review of all of the things that we have accomplished. So, as Liz mentioned, where our journey began was really in looking at our goals, which there was quite a few rooted in diversity, equity, inclusion, which was to address disproportionate discipline, to help build the district capacity in addressing, identifying, and talking about diversity, equity, inclusion, increasing staff diversity as well as retention, and also build trust at school sites in preparation for more difficult conversations around discrimination, harassment, implicit bias, and all of those issues. So, where we had started in our process is I had met with you all at the board in close session to give you an in-depth kind of overview of the work that we would be doing, the why, kind of what the format was going to be, and just be able to engage in some informal conversations about this work. For the beginning of the school year, we also had a session with Leadership 45 to give them an overview of the work, which then also filtered down into the work with the cohort that we call the Restorative Practitioners or Train the Trainer. And alongside that, there is also work that kind of filtered out with the cohort leading work at the sites that I'll talk a little bit more about later, as well as some consulting and coaching with HR. So, where we started was with Leadership 45. So, that's all site administrators as well as district administrators. We started off by doing a full-day training to give them an overview of the why. As Liz and I were strategizing on how to roll this out in the district, we were like, it's a really big district, and it's important that we are able to not just cultivate buy-in, but really help people to connect to the purpose of the work that we're trying to do, and really understand it on a conceptual and theoretical level, as well as on a really personal level. So, the reason why you see an image of moldy bread in this presentation was that was kind of the, the premise of our why, which is, we're here to address issues around diversity, equity, inclusion. But oftentimes, in many schools, we try to cut off the mold of what we see without really looking at the roots of the mold. And the roots have to do with school climate, school culture, implicit biases, practices and policies, faculty that staff have. And so that was kind of our, our approach to this work, and really not, just not looking at what's on the outside, but looking at how to address the root causes. And with the Leadership 45, we also got their support in launching school climate assessments at all of the school sites in order to gather baseline data about school culture and climate, and also use that to guide conversations with the sites and practitioners about specific challenges that they can tailor their work to. And to build off of that, we also focused a lot of energy and effort and work in helping to build capacity of staff and students at the district. So, we had our Train the Trainer/Restorative Practitioners group, and our goal for this year was just to train them in how to guide and design relationship-building circle practices that are rooted in restorative practices that can help school communities and staff to build trust, experience the benefits of these practices, prepare them to have more difficult conversations and explore norms, building trust, and also engaging in discussion circles on current events or topics like COVID-19 that we know are deeply impacting people. So, we had a total of nine sessions. Originally, it was supposed to be, I think, just like three or four full-day sessions, and we just kept breaking it apart to meet the demand and kind of parameters and circumstances of COVID. So, shout out to Liz for all of the coordination and the scheduling and all of that, because it required a lot of organization and coordination. And through it all, the cohort received over 25 hours of training, and this group were administrators. And this group were administrators, they were staff, they were students. It was really, really great diversity of group and I couldn't have asked for a better group to really launch this work with. And so throughout the process, every time we trained the group in a new practice, we gave them a kind of an action item to go out and facilitate a circle or a practice at the sites that they were assigned to. There was a lot of moving parts and a lot of shifting as we were trying to figure out kind of how to build this plane as we're building, flying it. But every site, I believe, was able to experience two to three relationships, building circle practices that staff from and students from the district facilitated with other colleagues outside of their direct school site. And with that, we also did some side projects and work with Matt in HR around diversity, equity and inclusion consulting to really start to do a deep dive and start to audit some of the practices related to recruitment, interviewing, hiring, onboarding and retention. And I know Matt was able to share with me some of his findings and also recommendations as we kind of start to unpack what are the challenges and barriers so that we can increase more diversity and equity within personnel. And the last kind of mini project that we did this year was also a student focus group. As Liz mentioned, it was, you know, student voice was huge in launching this project. And we know that a big challenge was around harassment. And the challenge was around how do students report harassment or why don't they report harassment incidences? And so we, our team facilitated a focus group. We tried to get a lot more participation, but there were only a few that showed up, middle and high schools, schoolers. But still, everything that they shared was really, really impactful and meaningful. And I know Liz had shared a little bit about that as well as a report with you to review and more depth. So with that, I wanted to hand it over to the staff and students, a few of them that were in our group to share with you the impact of the work that we have done this year to be able to share with you kind of like what for them has been the most meaningful or impactful part of this experience. Cause not only did they sit through hours of training, which I think I made fun, but hopefully they agree. Hours of training, facilitation, collaboration with people from other sites, going into other sites to facilitate practices and this like completely new thing that the district has never done before. So I want to hand it over to them to share with you their experiences and be as honest as possible. So I'll go ahead and hand it over to Amanda and, or Mandy, and I'll go ahead and stop my screen share.
Hi, I'm Mandy Kirk. Can you hear me? I'm a special education teacher at Casa Grande High School. And I just wanted to share that my, my big takeaway is gratitude to the board and to the commitment that was made to really follow through on the concerns that were raised about equity and inclusion. And to share that it's been a fantastic experience because of the length of time that we've been given. And that commitment is what I really want to kind of raise up and say, you know, often work about equity is performative. It's like, okay, we checked the box. We did the equity training next. And instead, this Circle Up training has been really rich with time for us to talk with one another, make a, make a personal commitment to do our own work on our own biases and make sure that we're, we're bringing our best selves to this process for the benefit of the district and everybody that we work with and work for. And I just wanted to thank you for, thank Liz and thank Tiffany and thank the board and thank everybody who, sorry, my allergies are really bad. Thank everybody on the program, you know, working on the program to, to really be fully present and participate fully in this because it's, it's the future of who we are as a district, getting this work done. So thank you.
Thanks, Mandy. I will pass over to Kate next.
All right. The experience I want to share is about my amazing team that I got to work with. So for.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, sure. My name is Kate Rennie. I teach science and robotics over at Kennelworth Junior High School. And I've been in the district for two years. The thing that I, my takeaway is how much, so I got initially, when we were put into teams, I got put with Angela and Elena. And I was like, oh, these are people that I don't know. And it's, they're from different sites and I was a little bit frustrated. But that has been the best thing is we, we were all, I think, a little bit nervous about doing this work and especially going to other schools to present and to lead. And so we decided we were going to meet every Tuesday at lunch and we were going to get ready and make sure that we had our, you know, what together. And by doing that, we have really formed a super strong team. We've been able to go out to our site three times to have circles with our team. And then I just think for the three of us, we really had that time to reflect, to look again, like Mandy was saying, at our own biases and what we're bringing to the situation. And then the other thing that has been so inspiring is at the trainings, when I look around the Zoom screen, I'm like, all these people like are passionate and want to see change in the district. And it's not just, you know, me and my small team, it's this massive group of educators and students that want to see change. And so I really hope that the work continues. I feel like we've just kind of, we've just started, we've like just started building relationships. And I, it hasn't, you know, I really want to see it get down to the student level. And so, yeah, it's been great.
Thanks, Kate. I will hand over to Angela.
Hi, everybody. I'm Angela Mason. I'm a full inclusion specialist with the district at this year, Petaluma High, Valley Vista, McDowell and Pengrove. So I'm all over the place. I have to echo what Kate says. I mean, I have a new buddy, like two new buddies. It's awesome. And as long as those trainings are, they've been very meaty and meaningful and very helpful to me personally, as, you know, just as a human being, but also as an educator. I already feel like I'm rooting for the underdog, you know, in what I do every day. So it really helps that, you know, my perspective on the way I interact with other people, it's not as unique as I thought it was, which is great. It also helped that the site that we were assigned, assigned to work with, that I keep hoping we get to continue working with. I already had a really good relationship with them because I got an opportunity to teach at that school last year. So it really helped to sort of bridge the gap when we came in and we were saying, yeah, we have the Circle Up presentation, you know, they were clueless. They didn't know who it was. And thankfully, you know, I was able to sort of explain and, and build that trust rather quickly. It was, it's just been really amazing. So having people really open up, people that I thought I already knew, having them really open up and really understand where they're coming from and what their perspectives are and where they feel they fit in, in this district and what this district can do for them, but also what they can lend to this district. It's just been really powerful. And that particular site happens to also be a smaller site. So it's a much smaller group of educators that we are working with. They're already rather intimate, but they realized that they didn't know everything about each other either. So even though they've been working together every day for however many years, they learned some new things about each other as well. And that lends to the student voices and we even got an opportunity to interview some of their students. So that's just been phenomenal. And I, as everyone has said, I mean, I don't think we can thank you guys enough. And whatever we can do to keep it going, it would be so meaningful. Again, not just on a personal level as a parent, but as an educator. And I think ultimately for the benefit of all the students in the district, the one who's next. Awesome student, by the way.
Thanks, Angela. Elena, you got big shoes to fill.
Hello, I'm Elena. I'm a freshman at Casa Grande. And it's definitely been an experience with Circle Up and working with my team. It's, I wouldn't be able to help out and, you know, be able to see the things I, I do see without them. And it's definitely a good thing with that. I think as a student, it's definitely, it was definitely strange because it was like stepping into a new world. When you're in a classroom and you're looking at the teachers, you don't usually see, you know, a lot of the stress that goes on behind the scenes. And it was definitely, it was good to, to be there and to talk with everybody and, you know, to get their perspective and to be able to see how they interact and just how things are when you're, you know, when you're being an educator and especially during COVID. It's a very different. It was also a learning experience just on my part. Seeing how everybody did what they did and, you know, our biases and just a lot of that. It was definitely, it gave me a look on myself and, you know, how I should act, just seeing everybody like that.
Thanks, Elena. Yeah, I know we were talking, we're like super different worlds coming in with like lots of adults and could feel really intimidating and awkward. And I just appreciate you being so brave in the space and like even showing up today. Thank you for being awesome. And then last, I will pass it over to Sandra.
Hi, I'm Sandra Larson. I teach third grade at McNear. I'm president of PFT. I have a really hard act to follow with Elena. I just say I didn't exactly have that same experience because I have two different jobs. There were times I had to miss trainings, which was sad. My team was changed, my site was arranged. But all through that, I still value the big picture and I actually have been involved from the inception of even going to the, to Liz and to the district and to the board saying, we need something here. And the frustration as a classroom teacher, sending kids out to the principal and having them coming right back. And, and just this, finding different practices and ways that we could, that would help our students and help our staff. So I'm very excited about it and I'm eager to continue working with the group and hopefully I can be there more often.
Thank you, Sandra. Thank you, Mandy, Kate, Elena, Angela, Sandra, for sharing your experience with the board today and everyone who is watching on all the aspects of this work, right? Like being a student in it and working with adults and leading adult spaces and working with sites and having to mitigate their different changes of people on your teams or sites you're working with, participating in training. Then I agree, I think the most beneficial part is not just the work that we were doing with others, but also the work that happens inside. Because we take that with us, right? And so to Sandra's point about, you know, the shifting and the moving around that was happening, I think some of the feedback that Liz and I were having this year is like, yeah, our logistics definitely have to be adjusted because I know some practitioners who are leading circles or practices at different sites didn't necessarily get to participate with their own site. So we're like, that's a challenge we need to overcome and look at how to really stabilize the facilitators at each site as well as the teams across the uncertainty. And also looking at how to build capacity outside of this group also. And so going back into my screen share here on next steps. We're still thinking in higher level, but some of the next steps of where we hope to go next year is continuing to deepen the work with the practitioners in more advanced training on restorative justice practices. This year is really focused on preventative and proactive circle practices for relationship building and inclusion and building trust. And also about self-awareness around biases that we have and how that can get passed on in our work and how to be aware of it. But next year, we really want to look at how do we address conflict and harm that could be related to discrimination or other types of conflict, as well as looking at how to expand training and capacity building across the district with staff related to implicit bias as well as restorative practices, while we continue to build the capacity of the restorative practitioners. So that's our presentation. I want to thank all of you for listening, for all of the staff and students and Liz, Leah for being a part of this. I'm going to go ahead and open it up to questions and hope that the rest of the group can stay on too and helping me answer any questions that we have.
Anyone have questions? I have a few, but I'll let you guys go first.
My question would be more for Liz. Do we have enough PD time scheduled into the next year's calendar to really prioritize this at the beginning of the year?
We do. The way that we have it right now, just as a draft, and we'll be bringing the full proposal to the board. But we are actually using all three of the staff professional development days, the one in August, the one in February and the one in June to run full staff professional development around Circle Up, just so they have the foundation as well, you know, and really know the why behind it, the why the practitioners are coming in. And then we hope to run just as many practitioner trainings, which we did, you know, eight, eight this year. So we're going to run eight again next year where they can continue and really dive down on the implicit bias work and on the restorative justice work. So it's, it's actually more hours to some extent next year because we're doing the whole staff trainings.
I got a couple. Thanks for this presentation. I, I really appreciate the dedication that folks are putting into this. And I'm glad to hear such positive experiences in it. How's the male representation on the trainers?
Question. I think just representation overall is what actually what I was going to ask as well. So if you could address both of those, that'd be.
It is a good question. I mean, we do have males. I can name some of them off the top of my head, but definitely, it's definitely more female centric. But what I can do, rather than try to answer it on this call, is just get all of the demographic data for you of who our practitioners are and then send that to you separately, because I don't know off the top of my head.
No, I'm just curious. And I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm a part of a similar thing going on at my university and I've noticed the same or a similar trend that, you know, it's not as many men participating as, as needs to be. You know, another thing I want to ask particularly of Tiffany, in that part you mentioned about consultations with HR, have you had any discussions about, I mean, I heard you talk about recruitment and retention and practices and those kinds of things. What about building employment pipelines for our, our staff? You know, with DEI in mind, is that something that you can help us think about? We, we seem, we have disconnected conversations that point to a really great opportunity to do something like that here. We have diverse students. We have a university that's nearby that, that does teacher education and, and we lack diversity in our staff. And so is that something you can explore with us?
Absolutely. We started that process already. Actually, see Matt, you're like nodding your head because we've talked a lot about that around like the barriers of like how much it costs to live in Petaluma, right? And like to purchase homes and how that is a huge barrier. But there are very nearby universities and teaching credential programs and youth and mentorship programs that we can create pipelines for. Matt, I don't know if you want to add to that, but it's definitely a conversation that we have started having and looking at.
And yeah, Sheldon, to your point, we've had the, we started having, Tiffany, I started having the conversation. We, you know, presented just sort of the basics and we've, we've been, it's, it's definitely an idea that's, that we're interested in pursuing, you know?
Yeah, I think Matt even had a question because there.
Good. I was just going to say, Gary and I, we're talking with Sonoma State today about that, just this topic. So it's definitely something we're, we're looking into.
Yeah. And I think there is like a specific school site, Matt, you were talking about that has a lot of kind of like staff who are alumni.
Yeah.
Have conversations about like what draws you back and how can we find out more about that? And I think Angela, you had your hand up. You were going to respond to a question from Sheldon, I think.
I put it in the chat because, you know, I tend to have word vomit. There are men represented in the ones that are there are incredible. Nathan Lee Cap from Casa is fantastic at PHS. I'm speaking for myself, even though I only attend his presentations, what about, for about 10 minutes. But the 10 minutes that I get is incredible. And a couple of the other fellows that are there, they're present and they're well represented. It seems like it's the percentage of male teachers that we have. It seems proportionate.
Oh, good. I'm glad to hear that.
We also have male administrators as well. Sam Wells, one of them.
And so at this point, you know, the, this last year, you know, 45 hours of training of the trainers. Are the trainers now, have they started, you know, creating those circles at the school sites? I wasn't really clear on that yet.
Yes.
Okay, good, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it was about five hours of training and yeah, they have the tools and practices to design those circles and facilitate them.
And how are those circles at those sites? How are they recruited?
Do you mean like how they're planned or it's, the admin actually give our team time to the practitioners during their staff meeting, so.
Okay, okay.
What is the circle? Like, is it teachers meeting? Is it teachers meeting with students? Like, what is a circle? I don't understand like what the circle actually looks like.
Yeah. I can try to answer unless someone else wants to answer. But basically what the circle looks like right now, they're just preventative practices. So they are mostly, it's with staff because we're looking at if we want this to trickle down to the students, staff also have to have that experience and know what they're kind of aiming towards and to be prepared to have more difficult conversations. So I started the team off with like how to facilitate circles to explore norms and agreements about what people need to work with each other or exploring needs around how to respect each other because we all carry different meanings around respecting one another. Also, how to facilitate team building circles on how to build trust, getting to know each other. Think like Angela mentioned earlier on, her part of like, yeah, some of the staff have been here for years and they're veteran staff, yet there are still things that they don't know about one another, which speak to kind of our lived experiences and the ways in which we show up. So I think it's really about a space to build community and build empathy and build trust.
So if I can speak to the small group that we work with, we, they were the staff, so we tried to get all staff. That seems to be difficult to do, of course, because some of the classified staff are not attending staff meetings, but we did get to classified staff in addition to the teaching, the teachers and one of the career counselors, who's amazing. And we, we get them together and we want to find out what they want to talk about. And they wanted to address student voice overwhelmingly. They wanted to address student voice, so we were able to get a panel together. And they didn't actually want to be together with the students. They wanted the students to be free and clear to say what they needed to say. So that was a really rich experiment, experience to be able to do that. And I know Kate wanted to say something else about it.
You said what I was going to say.
I think, Joanna, to your question too, like every facilitator practitioner was assigned to a different site. So along with going and designing and facilitating practices, they also met with the site administrators to do a needs assessment about what are the challenges and issues here and what would be the most beneficial? How could we use this time? And what are the challenges? So, um, yeah, all of the work was very, very tailored and admin were very involved in that.
Who was the needs assessment? Done by teachers, staff, students, admin?
Together. So it was literally a group effort. So after talking to the principal and deciding on a date, we went in and said, what do you, what do you need here? What, what do you feel is deficient? And I think we had, we asked for survey results from one of the many surveys that had been going out during the beginning of the semester or the beginning of the school year. And they gave us that demographic information. And we were able to really meet out, at least again during, for this particular site, we were able to meet out exactly what it is that they were looking for and what they wanted to discuss.
The admin wanted to discuss or the students wanted to discuss?
Staff, to begin with, the staff and the admin together. So it was all about what they wanted first. And then as we started to have discussions, we started to see that that there needed to be more.
Right. I mean, because we had a presentation, I think it was two board meetings ago, Matthew did about our staff makeup as a district. It's 90% white and we know that our student body is not. So I guess I'm just asking, how is this done in a way it was not centering like the white, female, straight teacher's experience?
Oh, oh, that's just straight talk conversations. And asking questions that allow them first to feel comfortable in talking about those, those types of biases and differences. But also allowing them to start asking questions. So people who identified as, for example, one teacher wouldn't mind me saying, one teacher identified as Latina. And no one really understood why that teacher identified that way. Because the outward appearance and behavior would say something different. But in our circles, in our discussions where we felt safe, that information came out. And so recognizing that living this life and working this job meant that I look a certain way and I behave a certain way doesn't necessarily mean that I'm presenting all of myself to you. And so that was something really powerful that came out of that. And I think it also led to more comfortable conversations with the entire staff of being able to say, well, gosh, you know, my children have never played with black children before. And who else has had that experience? So being able to ask each other that, those questions in a way that felt safe and comfortable to them was really powerful. And again, it's completely tailored. So in this particular situation, everyone felt more comfortable coming, coming up with those, those types of topics versus like what you, you described, that experience at another school might be a little bit different. It might take a little more time for that to come out. It did honestly, I say, I think it helped to be on Zoom and be in breakout rooms because you're not in somebody's face. And you're in a really quiet space where it's just maybe two of you or three of you having this discussion. It's not a breakout, a break room where someone else can see what you're talking about. You can say it and you don't have to share it to the entire group either.
How are we going to translate that next year, right? When we're back on campus, working with kids, like not centering, you know, the majority's experience and actually focusing on our BIPOC students or LGBTQ students, like not centering like, how does it feel for my kids, not to play with another black kid, but how does this child feel?
Yeah, I'm doing it.
Yeah. No, I was going to say, you can totally speak to that way better than I can.
I appreciate it, Angela. You shared a whole lot and that was really, really insightful. And just a testament to the deep work I think you've done with the sites. To your question, Joanna, about like, how are we going to continue to center marginalized BIPOC voices and experiences? Because that's why we're here, right? Not to make it safe and comfortable for white people or white staff in the room. And I think that is done through not only awareness building, but also through introducing of topics and challenges and discussions and storytelling, which is why I told Liz, I was like, I think we need to lean into implicit bias and I think Circle Up needs to hold this because I'm not going to put it onto practitioners because it takes a whole lot of training and self-work to be able to lead and guide those conversations, which is the direction I think we want to go in next, along with continuing to build the capacity of the practitioners to follow up on those conversations. But we are going to be the one who use our expertise to kind of lean into those shop points.
So I'm just wondering, besides the data that was used, if you have or would be open to, you know, looking at other data. Like we have had many presentations over these last two years, even when we were running for office, myself, Maddie and Caitlin. There was a lot of work done by groups like NBOP and Savior Six, talking with students in Sonoma County, specifically Petaluma, which then led to a forum at the library that I think all of us went to or most of us went to with the district at the time, hearing about student experiences. And so I'm just wondering if any of those have been addressed, like feeling unsafe on campus? Just like, not like implicit bias, but like straight up racism, lack of representation, student safety, like we've had those IG pages. We had Diversify Our Narrative come out, like there's just been a lot of like anecdotal information as well. And so I'm just wondering if that has been addressed in these circles or if you're willing to in the future?
Absolutely. I appreciate your question. Have they addressed in the circles? No. Are we willing to? Absolutely. I think that's, that's why we're here. I had a chance to kind of like sit in on some of the focus groups that we did with the youth and get some of that anecdotal information and it's heartbreaking, right? It's like they're experiencing racism and exclusion and bullying and harassment. And the feedback is, oh, we told the adults that they don't believe us or they're not doing anything about it. And I think that's like the paradigm shift we're trying to make of like, how can we create a space for students where they're at a level of trust and inclusion? Which is why I think, again, Liz and I were talking about training the staff in some of these relationship building pools because it's not enough to say we don't tolerate it. It's actually need to demonstrate it through our practices, which we need to incorporate this relationship building and inclusion practices through our teaching and in the ways in which we set up classroom environment. And so we're building the foundation for that and that's, that's the end goal. And I hope we get there sooner than later.
Yeah, I mean, I know that you were saying like next year, you were hoping to work on staff training, restorative justice. I would hope that would also include like, they're first find our curriculum, more Title VI and Title IX trainings. Those seems like to be like the big things that students are really feeling right now on our campuses. Yeah, and I don't, I just didn't hear any of that addressed.
Absolutely. I mean, some of it is not within our area, but you know, for sure. And looking at training in Title IX and how to address, because so often we have policies, but people don't know how to implement them, right? And the practices in doing that. And sometimes we have systems and they don't work and we need to review them.
Do you think the practitioners are ready for facilitating some of those harder conversations? Because I just feel and know anecdotally that some are bubbling up to the surface and are going to need to be addressed.
Um, I can't say for certain at this moment. Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to know when you don't know what.
It's hard to know and I hold our team to really high standards. So I would also hold our practitioners to very high standards. I wouldn't expect them to do kind of that deeper level of work unless we're like training people and that's their role and they're going to hold it. Not that I don't trust them, but it's, it takes time and resources.
And in the meantime, the Circle Up team might be able to facilitate that in their stead or supporting them?
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Yeah, thank you. Any more questions? Well, I think Mandy said it earlier, but so much gratitude for the board, for you all, believing in this work and making sure that it happens because we wouldn't be here if you didn't. And your support means the world. And just the questions that you're asking us today and asking me today, I'm just, thank you for that and holding that at the forefront of this work.
We're beyond behind it. We're, this is like front and center, you know, one of the top priorities.
Right. I mean, I don't think there's any doubt, like Sheldon was saying, we're behind this. Like this was one of our original board calls, like within months of coming in. And again, like that was two years ago. I think I'm just feeling more of a sense of urgency. And I actually like addressing our students and hearing their voices and working with them to have these conversations. So.
I think truthfully, if we can get more educators on board and committed, I think we'll see a lot more at the student level, to be honest. And I know there are teachers who have not joined to be Circle Up practitioners who were already working in that direction to give students their voices and to have them actually be heard. So I'm really hopeful that, you know, all of the fear around the shutdown and around COVID will, you know, once it starts to dissipate a great deal more, there will be a bit more commitment from the educators once they see how rewarding it is.
That's kind of what I was trying to say too with, with expressing my gratitude to the deep commitment of multiple years of this training and hours and hours of this training. It feels like a fully authentic investment in each of us to commit to doing this work and not like a Band-Aid.
All right. Well, thank you all. Thanks for your questions. And thank you to the panelists that came in this evening to, to speak with the board about it all. It was just another thing you've all done. So thanks so much.
Thanks, everybody.
And thank all of you for stepping up to be trained as trainers. I mean, really, that's where the work is going to happen.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say. Thank you so much for doing this.
Okay, thank you, Liz.
Everyone.
Moving on to reports on activities and correspondence of school board members. CASA site visit, Petaluma High School site visit, Sonoma County NAACP, North Bay LGBTQI Caregivers Presentation, CSBA Region Three Meeting, Circle Up, San Antonio High School Open House, Apprenticeship, Apprenticeship Webinar with Electricians and Plumbers Union, Valley Vista Site Visit, CSBA Region Seven Meeting, CSBA Learning Recovery Plan Webinar, Petaluma City School Study Session, which was very timely, given that this May is Mental Health Awareness Month. So we were very busy this month. Okay, so now we're moving on to comments from the public on consent, on consent items. So we are going to open up the chat. I'm going to read our statement about, oh, I'm going to find it. About public comment, please put your first and last name in the chat and the topic that you would like to speak towards. Okay. Under Government Code Section 54954.3, "Members of the public have the right to address the governing board on any items of interest providing it relates to the subject matter jurisdiction of the school district." While government code allows speakers to criticize the district's policies, procedures, programs, services and/or employees, the district does have a policy specific to complaint against employees. Should comments from the public pertain to a specific district employee, the board requests that the complaint first be submitted in writing to the employee's immediate supervisor for investigation. If the comment is about something that is not on the agenda, it will be heard only during the public comment or non-agendized items period. Once that part of the meeting is over, comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments and although we cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, we listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Public comments are subject to a four-minute per person limit or a 20-minute limit per subject matter. All right, so we're going to open the chat and then Gary, I'll let you decide when to close it.
Kate, you can close the chat.
Okay, you can close the chat.
Yeah.
Okay, it looks like we only have two. Is that right? Phoebe?
Hello, this, thank you very much. I mean, it's actually Henry Ellis. I'm Phoebe's son. I'm, I'm a sophomore at Petaluma High School. I'd just like to come on just to thank everybody, the teachers, the administrators and the board and the superintendent, their willingness to want to get the kids back in school. It's really meant a lot to me and I know that me and my friends have really enjoyed being back on campus and everyone around me. And I know that um, it was going to be a challenge originally for the teachers and everybody else, but I think that people have really adapted to it. And I think that the teachers, the ones that I've spoken to are actually very excited about being back on campus and are, they're really thrilled. I think that they're really thrilled to see the students. And I love that. I'm thrilled to see all my teachers and have those in-person experiences that I cherish about just joking around with my teachers and my classmates, obviously not at the full extent that I would usually be doing it. But it's to um, be back and just to get back into the, um, the mode of things that I'm usually used to doing. And I think that one of the things that everyone's really benefiting from just this slowly, we're getting back into the normal groove of things is obviously we can adapt to it and we can see what works and what doesn't. And so that brings me to my other question about, um, I know that people are very curious about what's going to go on the fall, whether it'll be a full in-person learning or whether there'll still be a hybrid model. But I know that people have a lot of questions about what that will look like. And I think that a detailed plan would really help people figure that out. Uh, so thank you guys. I just want to thank everybody for having me and for your ability to get me back in school. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I think that was the only comment. Yeah, it was just Henry. Um, okay, so moving on, um, adoption and approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion.
I'm going to approve it. I'll second.
All right. So any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Not even Maddie?
Nope. Pretty straightforward.
Yeah. All right. All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Okay, um, comments from the public on action items. Um, same spiel. We will open the chat for a few minutes. I'll let Superintendent Callahan decide when to close the chat.
Okay, we can close it.
Okay, um, so next up, action items. Um, and the first one is Ed Services. Is this you, Cliff?
Yeah.
Okay.
So yeah, so it's actually been, it's been a while since we've had any articulated courses with SRJC. Um, just, you know, just transitions in administrations, uh, you know, at, at the college. And for whatever reason, those, those, they just, those practices kind of fell out of favor countywide. Um, and then with the strong workforce, um, uh, you know, program grant that the county went in on last year with the consortium and we were part of that. Um, and so we're, so was SRJC. There was an effort to, to kind of reconnect and allow high school students to take high school courses that are articulated with, you know, with SRJC that gives them not only high school credit, but college credit. Um, and Jake Dunn at Petaluma High is the first one to kind of reach out and work on that. So uh, um, once this is approved by the board, students who take intro to ag welding um, will receive credit for the college class. I think it's welding 170. Um, so this is just the first of what we hope are many kind of reestablishing that, that connection and allowing our students to not only get high school credit, but college credit as well.
This is awesome. Super exciting. And thank you to Mr. Dunn for making it happen. And congrats on being the first person. I think it totally makes sense, especially if you are going to go on to the JC anyway. You wouldn't want to have to take a very similar class twice. So it just totally makes sense that you would already be able to earn it at one of our fabulous high schools.
It's a great idea. I'm surprised it went away for a while.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to speak ill of, you know, any prior um, folks involved, but it just kind of fell out of favor. Um, and then there's, you know, there's a new, you know, new group in charge and um, definitely wanted to kind of reconnect with the high schools.
It just had to do with funding. That's all. It was a funding issue. They, they, they weren't receiving funding for it anymore. So it was costing them money to, to bring on high school students. So.
Has the funding returned, Gary?
I don't know the particulars. Apparently it, it has in some way, shape or form, some of that.
Was that when they got rid of ROP?
No. That was later than that.
Okay.
Reprove, move to prove career technical education course articulation agreement between Petaluma Joint Union High School District and SRJC.
Second. Third.
All in favor?
Hi.
I opposed. Okay, moving on to comments from the public on discussion items. And then also, um, I noticed we'd have comments on non-agenda items. So anyone left in the audience still has a comment, period? Just go ahead. We'll open up the chat and um, same as before, Gary, close it down when you think it's best.
You just might get out of this before dark. Okay, close down the chat.
Okay, so we have two comments. One is from Sarah. And then she is going to read Sal's statement because they could not attend the meeting tonight. So I will give you the four minutes for each, Sarah.
Hi, great. Thank you so much. Um, thank you all for doing what you do and Circle Up Tiffany and all of the cohort. Thank you for uh, speaking up. It is incredibly clear um, that creating the space and framework for these cohorts and this work to be done is only the tip of the iceberg. And having a space and hearing everybody talk about how important and how profoundly um, moving this work was for the cohort makes it that much more clear that it needs to be expanded so that more teachers, more staff, more families, more get to have the same level of trainings that this cohort has. And I understand that doing train, the trainer allows it to be affordable for the time being, but it is very abundantly clear that it has opened up a vast amount of work that needs to be done and that we need to continue doing it. So thank you all for doing that. I'm going to take a moment to read what Sal Andropoulos has sent over to the board and some other administrators earlier today. Um, so hi, Sal Andropoulos. They them pronouns from uh, North Bay LGBTQI families and Petaluma Tide. Dear PCS Board Members and Administrators, as you are likely aware, it was reported this week via video and additional background shared on social media that a Casa Grande teacher used a racial slur, the N-word, when reading a passage from Of Mice and Men during a recent virtual class session. It was also reported that the students who shared this incident did not want to formally come forward for reasons including fear of being targeted by peers and staff. It is unacceptable for a teacher to use this term in class. Students should not be subjected to this kind of traumatizing conduct in school. And this incident once again highlights the need for ongoing required professional development for teachers to be able to understand the impacts of using racial or other slurs in, in a classroom setting and approach the curriculum in a more culturally conscious manner. Additionally, this incident highlights the urgency of conducting the classroom library slash curriculum review that has been discussed and recent, recently at the board level. This audit should be completed as soon as possible and books such as these, such as this need to be removed in favor of works such as contemporary texts written by BIPOC authors. Selection of new materials should involve student voices, particularly those from Black Indigenous and people of color and the LGBTQIA+ communities and other populations that are often marginalized and most impacted by discrimination and harassment. Further, hiring and retaining staff of educators and administrators that is reflective of the diversity of our community is critical, is a critical aspect of bringing a broader and more culturally responsive perspective to the classroom discussions and selection of materials. Finally, this feedback from students regarding their fear of retaliation for reporting is similar to the hesitations of other students have expressed in past situations involving discrimination or otherwise unsafe learning environments. Though it should not be students' responsibility to follow up regarding incidents of this nature, this occurrence underscores once again the importance of identifying and implementing more effective student reporting methods. Particularly as plans take shape in the 2122 school year, it is critical for discussions, training and curriculum updates to continue and expand at all levels across the district within individual school sites and among students regarding how to create safe, healthy and culturally conscious learning environments for all students. Sincerely, Sal Andropoulos, they them pronouns, North Bay LGBTQI families and Petaluma Tide. And I think Sal just always speaks so eloquently and I don't know if I could put anything more clearly or more upfront to all of you. I want to, as me, Sarah, um, talk to you and, and thank you all for the questions that you brought up in Circle Up, particularly Sheldon and Joanna and all of you for discussing retention and training and pipeline of teachers of how to get in here, how to be able to support them throughout their tenure in Petaluma City Schools as well as really diving deep. Again, it goes back into what you all are already doing. Your amazing board that is moving this forward and it needs to be moved forward as a long-term directive, that it, it needs to continue to be maybe an accountability group or something that is always there, that is not just ad hoc anymore. There needs to be a way in which this can become a continual work that's happening. And I really am thankful for all of the work that you've done and look forward to working with you all and Matthew Harris as you move forward in, in all of this. So it is dire. It's important. It's still happening. This is the second time in two years that a teacher at Casa Grande has used the N-word in the classrooms that we know of. And um, and it needs to stop. So thank you all. We really appreciate your work and we just need to keep on going.
Okay, I think those were the only comments. Um, moving on to William Settlement. I think this is you, Matthew. Item 13.1.
It, it is me and there's nothing, there's no findings, nothing to.
Okay, yeah.
Love it.
Um, and then back to Mr. DeGraw. Um, update on state and federal COVID-related funding opportunities. Is that you, Cliff?
Yep, that's me.
Okay.
And I hope Chris will jump into.
You know she will.
She shared with some info. Um, all right, let me share my screen here. Move this around. All right. It's a lot of info. It's a little dry. So I'm going to try to organize it in a way that is a.
It's money. It's not dry.
Okay, so um, as many of you know, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARP Act, um, back in March. Um, and this, you know, part of this authorized additional monies headed to schools. Um, and so, you know, we got the question, kind of where are we at with all of the monies that we've received so far or should receive? Um, there's been a number of them. And as you know, in, in government and education, we like to use acronyms. So it gets really confusing. So I'm going to do kind of a quick rundown of the different acts or assembly bills or senate bills um, that allocated funds for schools, whether they're state or federal. Um, and then what they're, you know, meant to be used for, and then a little bit on the timelines. And then we'll actually show you dollars and some estimates and some of the requirements. So here we go. So over the last year, these are all the different legislative acts that have allocated funds to schools. So that first one, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security Act is also called and referred to as the CARES Act. Um, that second one, SB 98820 is state funds. Uh, the next one, Coronavirus Response Relief is another federal pot, pot of money. And that's the, that doesn't have a cool acronym and C-R-R-S-A. So I don't know how you, CURSA, I don't know what that is. Um, and then there's um, an assembly bill from the state that included two, two grants. Um, the IPI, the in-person instruction grant, and then also the Expanded Learning Opportunities Grant. Um, and then most recently, the American Rescue Plan Act from the feds. So the IPI, if you remember that, that's uh, when the governor and legislature wanted to financially incentivize schools to start by April 1st and then secondary schools by April 15th. Um, because we started April 19th for secondary, we actually um, didn't receive all the funds. There's a penalty. Um, so we don't get all of the allocation. I think there's a 5% penalty. Um, so that's taken into account when we look at the actual allocations. So CARES Act, under the CARES Act, there are these different pockets of money. There's the CRF, Coronavirus Relief Funds. And then you'll see it just referred to as ESR, but that's the elementary and secondary school relief. And then there's the Governor Emergency Education Relief. And these numbers um, indicate, you know, which version, because there's, there's more in other acts. So I'm not going to go over these in detail. It's, this is the dry part, Sheldon. Um, but it's money. We have, um, this first part was money um, to be spent by, you know, May 31st this year. So this was money we got kind of, you know, last year going into this year. So facilitating distance learning, um, beverage and personnel, contact tracing, testing, good programs, PPE, uh, things like that.
And the largest portion, the largest portion of those funds actually had to be spent by December 31st. Twenty twenty.
Of twenty twenty.
We successfully had spent all of it by that date.
All right. And then the ESR one funds, um, again, last year um, is when the funding first, I mean, I guess the expenditure period was from last March. Um, the Friday, that last Friday, we had of school before going to distance learning through September 30th of 2022. So you'll see some overlap between these. Um, but coordinating with public health, um, addressing the needs of low-income students, children with disabilities, English learners, foster youth and other vulnerable populations, purchasing ed tech, um, planning for long-term closures, again, supplies related to, to PPE. Um, but money that could be used for summer school, after-school programs and other operations. Then the governor's funds, gear one, again, same timeline, little different focus. Before and after school programs, expanding learning, um, adding academic services, like assessing where students are academically, um, providing intensive intervention, purchasing additional instructional materials, again, device and connectivity, PD, nutrition, PPE again, so another kind of overlay to some of the other. Nutrition, P P E again, so another kind of overlay to some of the other funds. Think I might have skipped ahead there. Let me see, I get, okay, um, senate bill ninety eight and eight twenty, the learning loss mitigation fund, you can probably guess what this is gonna be focused on. So again, money allocated last year going through the end of this fiscal year. So again, learning supports, expanding learning, additional services, device connectivity, it's almost the same exact uses as the prior funds. Then we get into the C R S A funds, so another, another federal. Funding source, and now we have S R two. So it has the same uses as the first pot of money that S R funds. In addition, they've added addressing learning loss, preparing to reopen. You know, um, possibly capital improvements to buildings. And then the governor, uh, governor's funding as well. So this, this allowed um, the state to identify sub grants. That districts could apply for. The most recent grants that have come out, uh, these came out in March, A B in A B eighty six. So this was what I referred to earlier, the in-person instruction, trying to get schools open by April first. Or April fifteenth, if they're secondary, so this, you know, this was additional P P E. You know, things that you need to do to open schools, um, contact tracing, personnel, plexiglass, all those types of things. And then, uh, the one that kind of has the. Well, the, the one I guess that we're focused on right now, more importantly, is this next one, expanded learning opportunities grant. Because this one has to have plan that comes to the board for approval. Where you're kind of outlining the, the subcategories and purposes of the grant. How was the district intending to spend those? So some of this overlapped with some of the LCAP, uh, work we've been doing and have identified. We've been reaching out to stakeholders to get input and ideas. We had a meeting this morning, a district meeting, and we have another one on Thursday, kind of identifying academic. You know, brainstorming ideas, social emotional, and then family support. So these funds, uh, last for a couple of years, they are one-time funds, but we do have two fiscal years. To use them, so you'll see at the next board meeting. You know, somewhat of a rough plan, but kind of, you know, as specific as we can get at the time for how we intend to focus these monies going forward. Go back, okay. I went way back. Okay. So again, kind of already went over that, so some of the ventilation work we did, the. What are those called? The Apache Arrow Light. Air scrubbers that we put in the rooms, things like that. Those are some of the things you can use the I P I funds for. The expanded learning opportunities. So this is, you know, knowing that there's gonna be learning loss to mitigate, knowing that especially at the high school level is gonna be credit recovery needs. The intent of these funds is, you know, how do you support students, not only within the school day but outside the school day? So whether you're um, expanding, enhancing, adding after-school opportunities, after-school care. Credit recovery opportunities. They, um, they mentioned kind of learning hubs, community learning hubs, uh, where students have internet access. Tutoring programs, uh, things like that. Potentially additional, uh, mental health support, counseling, online, virtual tutoring access. A whole, a whole lot of things can fit in here, obviously, our summer school programs that we're planning fit very well into these monies for our high school and our. Our TK two summer school program. And then most recently, the American Rescue Plan Act funds, we don't know a lot about this yet. We know the purposes are, you know, match the, the previous S R funds, so a lot of these same topics. And I'll jump over in a second and show you our. Our estimated. Our estimated amount that we're getting, but uh, we don't know yet, we haven't received information from the state on exactly what the requirements will be for spending those funds. But those funds, um, are the ones that last the longest out in the future, we still have three years to spend, uh, this money. So. All right, let's see, um, so in addition to the other S R funds, um, S R three adds. Again, developing strategies and implementing public health protocols. Aligning guys with the CDC to reopen and operate facilities safely. So I'm gonna stop here and I'm gonna share one more screen here. So I hope this is big enough. If I can zoom in a little bit more, folks need. So I'm seeing, it's good, it's like we're okay, okay, so this is, um. You know, one of the ways Chris tracks, you know, both state and federal money. We do get allocated both the, you know, elementary and secondary districts and the charters. You know, as LEAs each get a piece of funding. So you can see here, um, it's got the original S R one funds. How much each LEA received and the total amount received for, um, for S R one, so four hundred forty eight thousand. And that was, um, distributed by district. The S R two funds, that's an additional, um, one point eight million. You can see that was also allocated just by major district, not to charters. The expanded learning opportunities grant, the state funds, here you'll see allocations to each of the charters. Um, and we're estimating. About. Was that four point eight million total? For the district. And then the in-person instruction grant, again, allocations for charters in the district, an additional two point two million. And then some of those learning loss mitigation. And other funds which have already been. Spent, so if you look at kind of our outstanding balance, if you will, we have about thirteen million dollars. That have different expenditure deadlines, uh, over here in the right-hand column. So. Most of these funds, we have at least another fiscal year. And those first S R dollars, we have two fiscal years and then that third one we have, or the S R three, we have three fiscal years. So it's, you know, it's not all available for the entire time, but that's the total amount we estimate having. I don't know, Chris, did you wanna add anything in here?
I would just say that, um, we did calculate an estimated penalty based on the five days for both packs. And for the secondary. And that totaled about seventy eight thousand dollars, that's just an estimate at this time. I would also say that we also, we certified all of our things for the. The grant with the penalties, if you didn't start instructions, so we were able to certify for all our LEAs yesterday. And confirm that we started either on the twelfth of April or on the nineteenth of April. So that, I believe, once we've done that certification, hopefully then they'll be. Releasing what our final apportionments will look like, because I think that's what they're waiting for, you had until June first to do that, so we've already done it. I also, when you look at the totals, it looks like it's an average of about four million a year, if you look at, if you go back to that slide, Cliff.
Yeah.
The one that goes until twenty four is about four point two million, so. It's not an exact science, because some of it has to be spent by twenty two and twenty three, the majority being by two thousand twenty two. And then a lesser amount by twenty three. So in the first year, obviously, year and a half, little over a year, we have the most amount to spend. And then it kind of goes off and probably averages, if you look at eighteen five five. And forty two eleven. You take that and you divide that by two, it's about three thou, three million dollars a year in the two out years, so. Just for planning purposes, we're gonna have to kind of take these budgeted amounts or these apportioned amounts. And then, um, look at how much does have to be spent by August thirty first twenty two and then September twenty three and then September twenty four. So.
Cliff, I'm gonna add, so it sounded like the expanded learning opportunities is the one. Who, whose plan needs to show up on the next board meeting, is that right?
That is correct.
And that's the one, I can't remember now, I mean, uh, if that public input is a part of or is required as. Planning, so I, I totally get, you know, leaning on the LCAP process, because that's what LCAP does too, is, is take input. But I wanna get your take on it, um, to what extent do you think? LCAP versus, you know, LCAP is more strategic, it's long-term, it's structural. This expanded learning opportunity is more an acute, uh, you know, intervention type of thinking. So in what way, I, I wanna know if, if we took the LCAP, uh, public input. As criteria for spending E L O, is that an appropriate thing? Or should we make an effort to, you know, invite you, prior to the next, uh, board meeting? You're just send out a message to the folks, say, hey, this is gonna be on the agenda, uh, give us your ideas. You know, I'm thinking particularly on socially emotional interventions that are, that are more one-time. Especially maybe with related to fall opening, um, what do you think?
Yeah, so that's the question we asked of, um, of SCO. You know, could you piggyback onto the LCAP process that's already happening and discussing some of these same issues? You know, one of our goals, as you know, is learning loss mitigation pandemic recovery. So, um, that is one thing, that's, that's one of the things we are gonna do next week, so for, at our LCAP meeting. You know, we're gonna try to reach out to more than just the typical LCAP stakeholders. We already have kind of a, a brainstorm list going, it's not, it's not fully vetted and ready for public consumption yet. But by then, it should be, so we can get feedback on kind of those general areas we're looking at. Uh, and we do, we do already have some specific ideas on how to spend those funds. But I do think it, it, it goes well with LCAP, because. Some of the things we're talking about doing in the LCAP, um, and sometimes you have to narrow that discussion down, because you can't fund it all. Now I feel great that we're gonna be able to not only do a lot of things we wanted to do in the LCAP. But a lot of these other ideas as well, um, at least for the next, you know, two years, maybe three years. So I, I do think they go well together. And it's gonna help us, we don't have to whittle down the wish list as much, we can actually do. You know, some of these ideas that have come up and not have to be so. You know, surgical like we have in the past.
Good, thanks.
But while we're here, I don't know how many people are still on the meeting, but. We're probably, I'm probably gonna change that meeting, I'm probably gonna move it from next Wednesday. So I will send something out, I'll either move it, you know, one day either before or after. Just turns out, my son ended up having, you know, senior scholarship awards night, that night, you know, and that date's been set for months and months, so. Um, I'll put something out so everyone knows, but for the, you know, sixty, for the forty six people still here. You heard it first.
Um, so I went to, I, I attended, I guess I attended, um, the webinar on this. It was given, I think, to the C S B A. And I didn't know what it was, um, and the timeframe is terrible. But, uh, a lot of the speakers were talking about. The plan as, as something that you, you wanna make sure, it's like what Sheldon said, it's, it's targeted. It's, it's really for, um, what we've lost in the past year. In, in all senses of that, and, um, and so it kind of, you know, the planning of it. Is super, super important. It's, you know, planning, like, I just took some notes very quickly, planning for sustainability. Early interventions, capacity building, build partnerships with local child-serving agencies. Their tutorial programs. Like you said, either before, after, uh, school. And then communicating the importance of these funds to the, um, to our community. And, uh, that we, it just requires a real effective communication, I'm worried about the rush. And I know it's not your fault.
I'll say, I'll show you the plan, the plan is literally three pages long. So this, this is not like an LCAP or, you know, it's, there's one page where you describe, there's, I think there's five categories.
Okay.
And you briefly describe how you're gonna target services in that category and you estimate a budget. So I, I can actually show you.
Oh, okay, so that's, so, okay, so we're not. Data-driven kind of minutia. That needs tremendous.
And Cliff, you said this already probably, but this is only for that one bucket of money, it's not for the entire thirty million, right?
Right, the, the, the plan that's required is for the E L O monies, the one-year, four million dollars.
It goes two years, it goes to twenty twenty three.
Sorry, you're right, yes.
Yes.
Twenty two.
I have it right here.
Well, hold on, it's twenty two. What was the final expenditure date on that? August of twenty two, so that's really.
A little over a year.
That's, yeah, it's one year.
Is that all it was? It wasn't, it didn't go to twenty three?
It's, that's her three is after twenty three.
So let me show you just those categories real quick, I kind of put this up and didn't talk about them, but so. You know, supplemental instruction support, that's the whole point of this, expanded, you know, expanding learning opportunities. So what things are you doing to expand instructional learning time? So is that adding potential, you know, for example, sections outside the school day? Potentially like an apex credit recovery, outside the school, this is, students can access all six of their classes and. Make up, you know, credit recovery could be expanded. You know, instruction outside of work hours as well. How are we accelerating and closing gaps? How are we integrating support to address barriers? If we do something like the community learning hubs, um, where, where students can access technology. How are we supporting credit deficient students, so I, well, that, that apex could go there as well, or like our summer school program. Any, this is kind of a catch-all additional, any training that we're doing for social emotional needs with staff. Staff training for social motion as of students. So those are the categories, so you, you have to categorize your, your, um, you know, your plan into those buckets. And estimate how much you're gonna spend, so you can see, it's not, it's not a crazy elaborate plan, but, um. So the timeline doesn't scare me too bad, when I first heard that, I was worried, when I saw the plan, it was only two pages and. An additional three pages of instructions, I felt a little better.
So we know, we know, Maddie, that, I mean, it's, uh, it's a. Daunting timeline. To that end, we've, like, just today had two meetings with two different agencies regarding. And we're continuing to do that, because it's going to, when, when you're looking at one-time monies. You wanna look at what resources are already out there that are providing these services and piggyback with them. Plus, it's a win-win, because we, we, we get more of a community response. So we're, so, you know, something will be coming more specific details at, at, um, the meeting next week with Cliff. But we know that basically, um, today in our, in our, in our planning meeting, that, that really, there's, there's three different buckets that we're looking at. In general terms, one of them is social emotional, and there's a lot of pieces that go with that, and so those will be fleshed out. The second one is academic. And there's specific things that, that go with that, and then the third one is family. And what specifically are we, are we doing to provide supports it with, to, to the family? And so you'll see, you'll see some things are kind of around that triangle for us. And a lot of them, like Cliff said, are things that have been discussed, discussed, um, through the, through the LCAP committee, but. As things that would be really important to do, but, but monies just didn't allow that to, to take place. And so, you know, the opportunities will, will open up considerably. But it'll get very specific, it'll be very targeted. And you will see, um, you, you should be able to look at it, whether you're a board member. Or whether you're a first-year parent and be able to see, I see directly how this is going to mitigate. Issues related to, to our, our world, um, in education over the last, since March of, of last year. You'll see how we're, we're, we're looking at specifically addressing what are the most concerning issues that we're seeing or anticipating.
Sorry, Karen. And.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, all of you. Um, so you had said that the money needs to be spent through August twenty-twenty-two, so does that include, like, a summer program as well that we need to put together for next summer? Or is that something that we can?
Summer school.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that could fund not only summer school this year, but next year. And it does, right, summer school crosses two fiscal years, right, because it's June through July, so. But because these are state funds, we have through August to spend them of twenty-twenty-two, so summer school will be, you know, over, well, before then.
And I think they intentionally did August specifically to pick up summer school.
Yeah.
Instead of doing it on a state fiscal year, so I think that's probably strategically what they were intending.
Yeah.
Great. Bring it on.
So, so clearly more work to be done on the rest of that money. Because that ELO is just speaking to, you know, a third of it. So they're not, there, there aren't plans required for the rest of it, but obviously we should have plans in place for, you know, what we think we should use the money for.
We kind of need to see some assessment data too, so that we know the extent of, of, of learning loss. If we're going to be a data-driven organization.
As well as looking at a lot of what Liz talked about today and last Saturday, you know, concerning the SEO.
Definitely.
And then by family, like, what, what is that? What is that captured?
Well, examples such as, you know, that, that we have parents that have different levels of abilities to, to provide resources to their students. And so providing very targeted parent resource support. And, and going through some parent education work for our parents is critical. For example, most parents aren't aware that, or, that if my child is struggling, say, in mathematics, if I know, if I can, if I can know where, what they're working on in their book, I can find a direct lesson for that online in Khan Academy that will give tutorial support for all of that student, which is phenomenal, that, you know, what they've been able to put forward. So there's a lot of resources there that, that are online that will help to tutor students asynchronous. Parents just need to know where to go, or what resources, you know, what resources are, do the district provide? And so when you're having these situations, so it's really getting into, to, if we have all of these resources that we're providing parents, I mean, providing students, parents need to have a, have a, a map to the rules of the game, so they understand how to, to access those things. So that's kind of what it means by the family piece, is really, it's, it's the one area, I would say, that most districts fall short. They really struggle with doing really good parent education. We do a nice job with PK right now, but we're really talking about something that's really, that's really focused in on, you know, how do you support your, your child's social, emotionally, academic needs? You know, over the course of the, you know, certainly of the course of the next couple of years.
So this, this is another idea that kind of, you know, aligns with something that came up at the LCAP, which was, you know, using community liaisons, bilingual community liaisons. One of the examples was the Promotora model that are in some, you know, Spanish-speaking communities, which are typically, you know, they, they liaise and help connect families with medical issues, but other districts are using that model to be kind of liaison between the schools. So things like that, that's another family piece, so kind of ongoing parent support, ongoing parent education. PK is great, but it is just a nine-week course, and it's very specific to preparing your students to go to college. And there's, you know, that's just one way to navigate the system, but there's a whole lot of, you know, there's a lot more. So those are some of the ideas we've been throwing around so far. So what, we're going to coalesce all that together in the next two weeks and bring back a.
No, yeah.
Plan.
Not to, not as a teaser, but not surprising, you know, in the work that, structural work around this, all roads kind of lead towards, you know, the conversation at the study session about having a, a, like a resource center, some type of a wellness center. Everything kind of moves towards having more individuals that can provide, you know, guidance and direction for folks, for, depending on what, what the particular need is, whether it's academic, you know, social, emotional, or what have you. And someone that's really working closely and under, and, and has their, their finger on the pulse of what services are available that are available for, just in the generally in the community, but also what services we're paying for, because we're paying contracts to different people in the community to provide those supports, so. There'll be more.
So, and then. Yeah, so I didn't.
It's going to be pretty robust, I think.
So we, we have a K-12 curriculum meeting coming up on Thursday, we're going to present some of the brainstorming ideas then as well, and then gather some feedback from staff at that meeting as well, and we've been, we had a few admin meetings where we did some brainstorming as well, so we're trying to get, you know, everyone in the organization involved and and then with the LCAP outreach next week, hopefully we can get some community partners and parents involved as well.
Right, anything else, any more questions for Cliff or Chris?
Oh, thank you guys for playing with this moving, moving target.
Yeah, I talked to Sheldon, he's like, mentioned June first, I'm like, what, what are you talking about? Yeah, so, thank you Sheldon for giving at least me a heads up on that. Thanks, Caitlin. All right, so future business, it's like we have a lot on tap. Training for board members on, and staff on Title VI and Title IX, can you clarify, Gary, what's the date on that? Do we have a date?
We have a Title VI date, that's going to be on June seventh.
Okay.
And I'll send you, as we get the trainings in line and have the specific Zoom links and specific time, I'll send those to all of you.
Okay, thank you. Are they going to be separate?
We're running two concurrently, we're having four, or sorry, two people come from school and college legal to run four sessions, so it's all going to be the same session, just run four different times, so that we can rotate the schools through them to get every staff member who's at the training.
Okay. All right, survey of libraries and ELA and social studies courses, community forum, to include feeder districts, parent square presentation. Looking forward to that myself. Family communication options, other languages, development of DEI plan, math support, that could be an ELO thing. Revision to climate resolution, is there anything else you guys wanted to add or ask questions about?
Joanna, can you hear me?
I can now, yeah. Can you, Maddie, can you hear her?
I'm not on mute, so.
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
The, um, the thing about the, the libraries, that was teacher libraries in the classroom, I just wanted to. And hopefully we will have a survey out soon, so that we'll have more information for that.
Okay. Anyone else wanted to add anything? No? Dare I say we're adjourned?
Yeah.
O M G, all right, we are adjourned at eight forty-one, thank you all, have a good night.
Thank you all.